Can I please have the reading of the mission and vision statement?
Mission statement, Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
And the vision statement, Richmond Community Schools is a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to prepare students for lives of choice, purpose, and service.
Thank you. Moving on to celebrations after.
President Jacob, trustees, and my ass, Mr. Sam Pritchard, our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, come to the podium to present tonight's honorees, given the fact that Mrs. Hazelbaker, our Director of Student Support Communications, needs to kind of play on vacation. So, Mr. Pritchard, welcome, sir, and if you can chair with us for our celebrations evening, that'd be great.
I would, I would love it. Board members and audience members, I am thrilled to honor some track accomplishments this past season, and I track teams at all levels. And in case you didn't know, I'll start with because their coach is running the tech force, his middle school program actually took some kids to the state to be over in Terre Haute, and had a second place finisher in the 100-meter dash, another 200-meter dash, and also had a distance medley group that finished fifth? Third? Oh, that's right, third place in the state distance medley. So they had a successful season as well. But our high school track team is really who we want to honor, and I know that Jacob Shiki, oh, and Mason, you're good. And Coach Lambry, you want to come on up? You guys come on forward, we are celebrating how these gentlemen represented Richmond High School at the state track meet just about a week or two ago. So you guys want to introduce yourselves and tell them, tell them how you did?
I'm Mason Heiney, 12th grader, graduate. I didn't do the best, but it was fun. It was a good experience, and I'm on to the next one.
Look, my name is Jacob Lindahl, and I didn't do exactly how I wanted to do the state meet, but I got top seven. I got seventh place in the state, so never gonna argue with the shot put.
Made it to the podium.
Yeah.
Good. When you're talking about across the state making it to the podium, that's a pretty big accomplishment. So, and they kind of underplayed it. Jacob got first place in sectional, he won the sectional in shot put, and our second place finisher in shot put, sectional, is there a side in Mason? And Mason also got first place in sectional in the discus, correct? And then at regional, again, regional champion in Jacob Lindahl, he won the shot put. And then Mason finished third in the discus at region before the state, so I would say that's a pretty, pretty big accomplishment. Coach, anything, anything else to add with that other? Go right ahead.
No, I'm proud of the boys, but I can't take any credit for coaching them. I actually have to give that to Tim White, so, Tim's our throwing coach. Prashia and his wife Alyssa is our discus throwing coach. She couldn't be here tonight. But I actually like to turn that over to Tim, because I probably have the most to say of the boys.
Proud of you guys. I haven't told you yet, but I'm always proud of you, always happy. And they did a really good job this year. And work hard, and they practice hard, and they help other teammates to try to throw their best as well, so. Good job, guys. Proud of you.
Well, lots of times track gets, like, it's an individual sport, but you're recognized as an individual, but it is a team sport. And so tell us a little bit about how much it has to help having a highly competitive group day in practicing against each other. I'm sure there's a weight program that is part of that, so how does that play into the success you?
I mean, we tried, we were lifting a lot more this year with, like, when we had the chance, when we didn't have multiple meets in a week. So that, like, we've been lifting often since September, October last year, so I think that has helped. They, I mean, they've always worked hard in the weight room, they're naturally athletically gifted, so a lot of that stuff just kind of came naturally to them. They, both of them had helped our other team, our other throwers all year too, so they helped to motivate in the weight room and, like, try to get better in their events. So I call them Coach Lindahl and Coach Mason all season, because they were helping out a lot. But yeah.
Yeah, so that's good for the young guys. I'm sure there's a young group behind you guys that'll kick it out, kind of set the bar for them, which is great. And you are, David said, moving on to throw, what are you, what are you gonna throw in college?
Um, we're gonna try hammer and shot, and then maybe a little bit of disc, I think, so.
Coach, may you make your throwers run? Do they have to run in any running events? Throwers really, yeah. Gotcha, yeah, 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 that's always a good time, that's always a good time. So we appreciate these guys, we appreciate you guys, I think they want to get a picture. Any comments from the board? Any questions?
I personally want to say congratulations. I'm a track guy too, so I went to state in the 11th and 12th grade, so just going to the state. Now, I was a sprinter, so I know you guys are probably, probably faster than me now, but just to get to state and your parents there and the atmosphere there, can you explain that, what that felt like? Because I think future athletes don't understand that accomplishment and the weight of you guys trying to do your best. I think it's, it needs to be said that it's, it's a good atmosphere.
Going to the state meet was my favorite part of the entire year. I love competition, and that's what I've been writing myself on, is being able to perform better in competition, because I just love it so much. So being able to go there and just being able to tell myself that I'm, like, in the top percent of people who are, who are throwing shot put, I'm in the top percent, and that's what the official told us as well. Every time before we'd start throwing, he'd say, like, it's about, like, hundreds and hundreds of people competed in sectional for shot put, and you guys are the 32 best. So, congratulations before we didn't throw, so, no, I felt amazing, and just being able to, uh, being able to, everybody wanted the same thing, it was a lot of fun, great atmosphere.
Awesome. Hey, did Coach take you out to dinner at least?
No, they showed up today, like, because they got kids.
Nice.
I did have one comment. Sam, you asked the best question, do throwers have to run? And I was glad to hear the answer was no. I know when my son Hudson was at the high school, he was like, oh, I'll try shot put, you know, and discus. And they did make him run on that first practice, and he never went back. So, keep it up, don't be, I was like, that was, that was actually a good answer.
Yeah, I was a track runner too, come to brag, Mr. Heiney, I was like, state two years too. I may have a state record. But I'm super proud of you guys, like, I love track field, it is, I'm trying to get tickets for the Olympics in LA if anyone wants to go. Um, but it's so hard, and it always seems so far away in any sport, but I'm just super proud of both of you. Like, it's so impressive, and I feel like you all have just been doing the grind every year too, so, yeah, you should be super proud of yourselves.
So, I ran hurdles, I was hurdle coach here for 10 years, and I do have a school record still. And it lets you know how old I am, because they don't have this, they don't have that particular event anymore, so it'll never be, it'll never be transferred from yards to meters, so, hey. And I beat Moses, by the way. On a serious note, Mason, congratulations, and I knew that you're gonna do well and see your grandmother back there. Uh, you're gonna do well at Davidson and competing, not only that, but also your academics. Jacob, I have this question for you. Seventh place, how many of the people in front of you are seniors and are graduating? And what inspiration does that get you? Because you know that starting out, next year, you're going to be one of the top 10 in the state.
Well, top 10 is a little bit of my understanding, I'd be top three next year, because everybody in front of me, there are five people in front of me who are all seniors, there's one kid who was also a junior who was ahead of me. So, no, it feels really good, keeps me motivated, gonna have a lot of fun next year.
Good, good. We definitely are extremely proud of what you all have done and the representation, not only our high school, but also our fair city, cultures, of course, those sacrifices that you all have continued to make to put so many students in a position to be successful. And so if you all don't mind, just sharing with us, who you brought along with you? Because I think there's one young lady back there, one amazing woman, that is so proud of her grandson.
Back there is, there's something, a lot of you know her.
I can't see her.
But yeah, she's supported me along the way. I know what the college search, she was big on academics, fighting the right school, and I think I found the right one.
And if I'm not mistaken, young Heidi, again, having gone to school with your parents, they're annoying, but also RHS. How would your grandmother share with me, of the schools that you applied to, you were accepted, at least of all of the schools? There were several prestigious schools that, that your accolades also complemented.
I think the greatest school that I reached out was the MIT coach, so, yeah.
MIT?
MIT, cool.
Jacob, share, who's with you, sir?
Uh, first one today is my brother back there, Michael Lindahl, she's just been, just my constant person who keeps me in line, keeps me disciplined all the time, making sure I get to practice on time. So, she's been great, and we're about to enter that whole college search that Mason was talking about when we get back from our vacation, so.
Let's have him give them a round of applause.
So, moving on to our consent items, this is consent items 4.01 through 4.06. I move to approve items 4.01 through 4.6.
Second.
The motion by member Brennan and a second by member Aloriaga. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, vote passes six to zero. Moving to action items, first up, 5.01 donations. I move to accept the donations as presented.
Second.
That was a motion by member Stoltz, a second by member Brand. Any questions or comments?
I would just say thank you, thank you, thank you to all the donors on the list, and notice, recognize some names, that our guy Stoltz and Heidi, who was just here, and Wolpe, who's here. So it's nice to see people in our own community, getting back to so many businesses and just individuals, that we appreciate all the donations.
And our donations totaled $39,560, which is amazing. Yes. All those in favor, will be saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, vote passes six to zero. Um, 5.02, request for additional docket.
I move to approve item 5.02, the request for additional docket is presented.
One second. That was a motion by member Stevens and a second by member Stoltz. Any questions or comments?
Um, I just wanted to state, we only have one board meeting in June, so, you know, this is from this swap bird, asking to do an additional council table docket, so generally do this when we have one board meeting in a month, which happens a couple times a year. So, um, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, vote passes six to zero. Um, item 5.03 redevelopment commission application.
I move to approve item 5.03. Second.
That was a motion by member Brand and a second by member Aloriaga. Any questions or comments?
Um, I did have one question. I know it's a reoccurring dollar figure. I guess, I don't know if we know the process of, you know, if the program, if we need to switch it, and maybe that's something that we can have answered. If we change it, if we cancel that, if we ask to fill out another application to stop that donation, if we, how we handle that fast.
Um, as regards to redevelopment?
Yeah.
I believe this is, since I did this for the first time. Mrs. Scout, if you don't mind, approaching the podium, Assistant Superintendent of Business, Mrs. Karen Scout, if you can provide some insight, I know you have more historical knowledge than all the others.
So the redevelopment commission has a very specific process on the funding that you receive, so they'll approve the application if they desire to fund the project. And then everything is reimbursed. So what it is, is if you, if we have four kids or 100 kids, it's reimbursable up to the amount that we're asking for on that application. What that would be is each year, and that way it gives us, like, if, if there aren't a lot of kids one year, but there's a lot more kids in another year, it's an up to amount. So it doesn't mean that they'll fund at that level every year, it's just us, the kids are enrolling. The other thing that is exciting about this program is it is an expansion program of what we currently do. So they are always exploring between our career education department and Ivy Tech, they're always, as well as the Department of Workforce Development and the IDOE, they all work together to map, or now it's a pathway, how the career programming options look based on state need. And so there are tiers to that, and Mr. Amex and Mr. Pritchard can give us even more information. I know the very baselines of all of those tiers, but it goes from, like, high need to just desirable educational growth in our state. So the state determines all of that, and then we as schools make sure that we are educating appropriately, and Ivy Tech is a natural part of that, being also a state school. So with that, this program does allow for movement with the programming, because one thing that you find at the secondary levels is some things are really popular and some things aren't. And so our map right now is for new programs for a period of two, you know, year incrementals, so it's a two-year program. And that way we can expand and see how they go. If they're not popular, we can always transition to another one. But this also absolutely meets the definition of redevelopment, because we are providing the next generation of workers, thereby providing our economy and our community with growth possibilities to economic development. So with that, we're really excited to present this to the redevelopment commission. Ivy Tech is super excited as well to present this. Ms. Wolpe, Mr. Amex, Mr. Hensley, this has been a work in progress for a long time in making sure we can bring this to fruition for next full year. So, but it is, it is reimbursable based on student tuition. And so we have, and I think that we are maximizing the numbers at some caps, so that Ivy Tech can make sure that that programming is sustainable. But also knowing that until we know, have enough where it is, making sure that we can utilize the programming in the space available. So that's how it works. Are there other questions?
Yeah, I mean, I just saw that, you know, the first course addition is two-year welding program, which I think is amazing, I've got a family number of welds, and they work so much overtime, which he's young and single. But there's such a need, so I think that's really good, that we're not starting, but the expansion, like, kind of looking at something, so.
Yeah, so Ivy Tech has four plans they would like to explore, we're working on their pathways, and welding was the first one. And so as we see those pathways develop and see what the DOE provides to all of us, then we'll map the others into this, but it's really exciting.
I think anything that we can do to bridge the gap between our doors and their employment is a good thing, so Richmond needs workers.
It's interesting, I know that when we were shaking hands at graduation, spoke with at least three individuals who, asking them, what are your next plans? Said, I'm studying welding.
I, I could say maybe five, six, I don't know, it was a lot.
Another aspect with Ivy Tech is many of you may not be aware, they have a new facility, a medical facility.
Right.
It's been renovated, and we also plug it to expand and take advantage of that, along with, as Mr. South mentioned, a few other things. There's some great opportunities.
Yeah, no, we need to get them plugged in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Let me get this going.
Um, great. All those in favor, will be saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, vote passes six to zero. Um, moving to item 5.04, school calendar, 2026, 2027.
I move to approve 5.04, the school calendar for the years, 26, school year 26 to 27.
Second. That was a motion by member Stevens and a second by member Stoltz. Any questions or comments?
Um, probably just that the public should know that teachers, administrators, and R E A were part of the conversations. Probably just that the public should know that teachers, administrators, and R E A were part of the conversations in developing the calendar.
Just out of curiosity, what's that process look like? Because I know I was, I think when I saw twenty twenty seven, all that, all the calendar, I was like, whoa. But just the thought process for going two years, basically, yeah, just because, you know, I'm sure there might be other people out there looking at my forehead, but not planning to. Behind it, right? So it might be beneficial to share a little bit of that, that thought process and what that process looks like developing a calendar.
Yes, sir. And to your point, Mr. White, in corporations, I'm sure so much around county, but around state, corporations and school districts will plan out as far as two years in advance of the time you release two-year calendars, so as to allow for parents, guardians, faculty staff to prepare for whether it be physician's appointments for vacation or scheduling dates when it comes to reattainment, I mean, just a lot of different reasons as to why corporations do so. And with Ausch, that was something that community members and parents and guardians were seeking such information. And the process that had been utilized in the past is to, as mentioned, communicate with several different facets within a corporation, different touchpoints. So each touchpoint can weigh in, but teachers, measures. So of the calendars before you all takes us through twenty six, twenty seven. I think it also provides the opportunity as we transition into phase two, strategic planning process, to determine what that twenty six, twenty seven, as well as twenty seven, twenty eight, you still have.
I just had a good question. I asked a question about a random day. So if we have tweaks or something comes up, or you know, that would be just something, since I've been on board, I don't think we've had to do that. But is that something we would just come back and approve? Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah. And to your point, since I've been in this role, I don't think we've had to revise calendars that come before you all approve in the past. But that option is always there if necessary of what has been forecasted, anticipated in this, but that option is always there.
Okay. That's good. Great. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Vote passes six to zero. Moving on to item five point oh five, administrator contract renewals. And I just want to make sure we have clarification on the motion for the board is to approve the two-year contract extensions for the administrators.
President Pickett, if you may interject, if you don't mind. As President Pickett just alluded to, as before you, is a recommendation to extend our current school administrators' contracts by two years. This extension is consistent with what we exercised two years ago in the spring of twenty twenty three. And again, what this simply causes is allow us to assure to our building of leaders who have been doing a committed job, the security within their respective roles. One of the things that I was charged with years ago was to maintain consistency, especially amongst our mutual ranks. And I'm excited to report that for a third and second year, we have both returning to the respective school houses. As we know, as data shows, you have consistent, stable leadership, student achievement, attendance, the online yards and the reasons. We've also experienced that. And so this is just to revisit a practice that we found to be very successful two years ago. And what this does this evening is just assures those principals that their contract can be guaranteed for the next two years. As we also have done later this fall, as we get into the fall season. And with this upcoming fall season, we have unique opportunity to explore ways to extend appreciation across the board for faculty staff and administration, certified and classified. So tonight, all it simply does tonight is extend the two-year extension.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Second. The motion.
May I also interject?
Was it not, I was about to do my first one, guys.
I also want to share, by way of statute, anytime a new administrator is hired, they automatically get a two-year extension. So this is really consistent, even in more ways than one, not only our past practice, but also the practice around the state with administration.
Great. Michael, I think you might have to recuse yourself.
I think I might have to recuse myself because of my wife is on the two-year contract.
So.
So I can't do my first one.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, two weeks in July.
We got policy review. That's I, right.
Technically, you can make the motion by Robert Schurle, or you just can't vote.
Fair enough, but Melissa, you have this one, because you look eager.
I will, I will.
Thank you, Aaron. I was like, I was talking about that.
On behalf of Mike, I move to approve five point oh five administrative contract renewals as presented.
I'll second.
That was a motion by member Stevens and a second by member Stoltz. Any questions or comments? All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
Aye.
Vote passes five to zero with one abstention.
It's your first extension. It is.
It's the legal one. Moving on to policy review update, six point oh one, which is policy eighty four fifty five. Coach training references and I H S double A reporting, second reading and approval.
Right, so I move to approve policies, oh, excuse me, item six point zero one, policy four fifty five, the coach training references and I H S A reporting upon second reading. I'll second.
That was a motion by member Stevens, a second by member Brand. Any questions or comments?
I think it brings about consistency with every coach that we have in our system regardless of the support in regards to what I H S A's requirements are. Everything from keeping student, student records to all the other good stuff, so.
All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Vote passes six to zero. Item six point oh two, which is policy zero one six five, board meetings, second reading and approval.
I move to approve item six point oh two, policy zero one six five, board meetings.
It's a motion by member Stoltz and a second by member Stevens. Any questions or comments? All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Vote passes six to zero. Moving on to other discussion, president's update. I had one and then I think we've had a response to it today, so no president's update. So I move to open forum. If any room members have anything, any issues, items, accolades to bring up?
People at their band practicing. I think that it did.
That's all of them today, or?
Summer is obviously here.
I would also add that a lot of, I think, we think of teachers taking like the summer off. Really, teacher educators spend a lot of time with extra training and using their time to prepare to, and they'll necessarily have to, but they are passionate about what they do. And so I appreciate that. I just want to acknowledge that.
To your point, this is right, they are always looking to improve upon their craft and quality of teachers and professional involvement, opportunities that they take advantage of. And I'm not going to steal the thunder of the young man, says he comes up later to share some bellringers. But yes, our teachers spend a lot of time also with their classrooms, believe it or not, during the summer, just preparing for next year, so.
I guess I want to celebrate graduation too. It really was a great event, very celebratory, love the streamers. It's, it's a big event to put on, and so I felt like our, our employees did a great job with that, so.
Yeah, I have to say in that, that was, it was, being on the other side, sitting at, I'd say, work for my first time, that was amazing. And then, you know, and I guess it comes twofold, because when I was the class of ninety nine, and then I saw Ray Wolfie, I was like, my God. It was amazing, like just seeing her up there. I was like, I just wanted to give her a big hug, so, but she took a picture instead. It's worth it.
Yes. No, I do think it's such a highlight. It's fun. Obviously, this year was much more enjoyable temperature-wise. And I did want to say, I, I, I need the confetti thing next year.
I need one too. That looks amazing.
It's so, I don't, it's like I, you know, I remember those fireworks and loves to celebrate.
Yeah, we've had them in years past, and we didn't get them this year.
We're gonna.
I, I. I just, I, you know, on the second though, I appreciate the community, to see all the community members gather around their kids, their loved ones, to celebrate kind of the first step of becoming an adult. I think I was very forward to see, I, I just was amazed by seeing those stands almost full. And that was amazing in itself, because you see the community coming around and, and sending a certificate of accomplishments.
Yeah.
I think the community deserves a round of applause for that too, because they created that atmosphere. And I was, I was, I was a little overwhelmed, so.
It's such a good, good feeling day.
Yeah.
Someone mentioned the temperature and the, how comfortable it was in there. But behind the scenes, maybe only a few people know that it almost was not like that. And with a major disaster that occurred just shortly before then. So thank you to Karen Scout, but particularly Mr. McCurdy for, for coming in on his own, and I hope we didn't get billed for that. No, I'm just kidding. But, but I'm. Doing that because they definitely averted what could have been a really disaster situation.
Could have been a hot one.
Yeah.
Well, and I got a call from former, former President Brad Walton, who we also think, he shared with me that we were good to go. And that we would have all, more than the common circumstance, when he said, more than the common circumstance. And the students, again, as was alluded to by the keynote student speaker, they too dealt with adversity. Like other classes before them may not have had a bad deal directly with, not only the coke on their front end, but also, as was mentioned, the year when we had three major events that stopped school, the high school, the entire month. And so that class definitely had been battle tested, and I think they're going to contribute quite nicely around the celebration, Wayne County, and also the country and world.
Yeah.
I did want to give a shout out to Ray, my youngest, six-year-old is in doing their art camp this week. And so they had a waitlist last year. We got in, who did they sign up for? They got in this year. And I think they have three sessions, and then it's two sessions a day. And I, you know, I was talking to Mr. Denmark, they even added another session. But she's living the dream right now. So if you guys are over there, they have their art show every Friday, so at the end of each session. So you always stand by this Fridays. I forget which age range. Is it kindergarten to fifth grade?
I think so.
I know it's the younger kids, but if you're.
I think it's K through fifth.
Yeah.
I'm not.
Yeah. So if you're around.
They will be having an art show on Friday. I asked my daughter what she's doing, and she said, uh, I feel spoiler.
You'll find out on Friday.
Very embarrassing.
My kids always loved that.
Yes. Any other items?
I think I probably want to give a shout out to all the coaches that are doing the Richmond community sports camps. I think that's very important, that we are providing that type of atmosphere for future athletes to come in. And just to see, because I know this is going to happen, where you see those little kids on that field and that feeling of, oh my, oh my God. They're going to grow up to be Richmond High School athletes. And so thank kudos to the coaches that provided that service. And I think it's huge for us as a community to extend that invitation.
Well, I always think, being a little kid and getting to go out on fly ball fields, being down on Tarrant Center floor, like, I mean, even now you walk out there and it's a different feeling, and I, I know the kids love it, right? If they're on the bride or what, whichever sport they're involved in.
And can't wait to hear the band. I know he's ready.
Okay, did look it up. It's K through sixth. K through sixth, thank you, yes.
Great. Moving on, so preview of upcoming meetings and events. We have a special policy meeting on June seventeen. So that's next Tuesday at ten AM here in Auburn. And our next regular business meeting is Wednesday, July ninth at five thirty PM. So moving on to a German and bell ringer. Great.
President Hickory, trustees, prior to bringing my Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Mr. Sam Pritchard back to the podium, I would simply like to also acknowledge that during you all's consent approval of the human resources report, you approved two new leaders within our school corporation. And those two are in attendance, I'm just going to ask that Mrs. Tracy Lovett, our new principal at Westview Elementary School, and Mrs. Ashley Gerard, our brand new principal at Charles Elementary School, get a great round of applause. We all are extremely excited as to the opportunity for them, and we are confident that they will continue to build upon the momentum that we have experienced here of late. In addition, who is not in attendance, but is typically in attendance, is Steve Jones. He's also transitioning into the role of Director of Operations here at Central Office. And so we are looking to have his brand new chair be a part of where we are continuing to, to, you know, to provide for faculty staff and students. And so congratulations to Mr. Jones. And now, without further ado, the, the hour, Mr. Sam Pritchard, if he can rejoin us here at the podium for our bell ringing, the information.
I would love to. I would love to.
I just want to, I have a question. Did you volunteer for this?
Oh, without a doubt.
Did you just get the shorts?
Yeah. I thought he was after wearing Ohio State University attire.
This is Richmond, Ray.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry, I attempted to. And there's no five minute time limit to this. We're getting a whole seat, which I'm going to be the edge. So our bell ringer tonight is to remind the board and our public large of our tech enriched summer of learning conference. And you mentioned teachers going above and beyond, and so that's one of the things that we have over two hundred and seventy local educators. Well, across the state constitute our tech enriched conference. And we are actually the, it's our, RCS is twelfth annual tech enriched conference, which is the longest running conference in the state of Indiana. So we are the OGs, as the kids would say, of the tech enriched summer of learning. And that is, but our e-learning team, Jeremy Hill, Tim Arnold, and Jody Robinson take care of that. They write a grant to fund it, so everything is free. There's, they receive eighteen thousand dollars in grant money, but they also raised locally six thousand dollars in donations that go towards the, what does this say? Swag, door prizes, free food registration for everybody. Like I said, two hundred and seventy attendees, ninety-four of which are from RCS staff members. They have thirty-two speakers coming. The keynote is Amy Store from an organization called Fried Tech out of Texas. And then they have three spotlight speakers that do sessions throughout the day. Brandy Coomer, Nadine Gilkerson, and Stevie Frank. So there are forty-nine total sessions throughout the day that folks can attend on a variety of things like virtual blended learning, STEM, universal design for learning, and of course, AI and AI literacy is a hot topic nowadays in education. So we have over sixty-plus door prizes that range from anything from. So, uh, we have over sixty-plus door prizes that, uh, range from anything from, uh, the Cincinnati tickets of the Cincinnati Reds and Indianapolis Indians, uh, to local, to local vendors, food cer- food certificates, gift cards, those kinds of things. Um, so we ve- very much appreciate the e-learning team and the, the, uh, staff members who are giving up their time to come and make themselves better at their profession and better for our kids, uh, by coming to be a part of that. So we want to make sure, recognize them and thank them for their efforts there.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard, and prior to the adjourn, adjournment, I also would like to congratulate, uh, Mrs. Lovett and Mr. Mrs. Gerard's families. Because as we know, uh, it, within administration, it's a family effect and the sacrifices that, uh, Mrs. Lovett, Mr. Gerard, along with Mr. Jones and all of our administrators make, uh, are only possible because you all as family members, uh, allow them to do so. So we want to thank you all, congratulate you all as well, thank you for being here. And, um, the goal is always to have that balance, to show as family members, help them find that balance, especially as they enter their first year as principals. Help them find that balance and help them understand that, uh, tomorrow is, is always a better day, and so congratulations to all.